Good evening, okay, welcome to our March 4, 2025 City Council meeting. Right now is 7:01 and meeting is now in session. And any person wish to address the City Council regarding any matter list on the agenda, except any matter except for the public hearing or any other matter within the council jurisdiction during our communication must complete the speaker call. Let's provide add entry, okay, to the council chamber and submit to the car to the Assistant City Clerk prior to the commencement of our communication. The speaker call will not be accepted after our communication has started. So please, if you want to address the council, please provide the speaker call and before the over-communication. Okay, and tonight invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Matina for Amazing Love Ministry, and I will lead us to the pledge of all legion, all rise please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as always, as we gather here, we thank you for the freedoms and the blessings that we enjoy in our country. We remember the words of the Song of All America, "America God shed his grace on thee and you have, Father." Every blessing that we enjoy, every freedom is because of you. Help us to be a grateful community, a grateful city, a grateful state, and a grateful nation. And Heavenly Father, we remember the words of all from the words of the Psalmist. "I was lifted up by eyes unto the hills from where comes my help. My help comes from the Lord who made heaven and earth. He will not allow your foot to be moved; he that keepeth you will neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord is your keeper." Heavenly Father, keep our city, keep it safe. Keep our children, Heavenly Father, and keep our schools safe haven, keep our teachers. Keep and protect our police officers, our first responders. Keep our streets, Father, be the keeper of our streets, Father. That peace and harmony prevail in our streets and keep our businesses prospering. The Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. The Lord shed his grace upon you. The Lord lift up his continence upon you and grant you his shalom peace, nothing missing, nothing broken. God bless America and God bless our great city of West Covina. Amen.
Amen. Please put your right hand to your heart and face the flag. Thank you, and follow my lead.
I pledge allegiance to the Father and to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands united under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat, please. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Cantos is absent this evening. Councilwoman Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Wu?
Here. City Attorney, do you have anything to report from the close?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, and then we go to our presentation tonight. We have two presentations. One is the proclamation promoting nutrition. Another one, I think is very important, okay? If we don't honor it, we will be in trouble, especially the gentleman. And we're going to honor, okay, the most important thing, the honor of the National Women's Month, okay? And let's have Michelle Fan to the podium, please. Supposedly, I have to read this long paragraph for you, but City Clerk say I better to be quiet because the nutrition, the specialists want to present it to you guys, how to eat properly. So I think you can do much better job than me. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michelle Fang. I am a nutrition student at Cal Poly Pomona. So more information about the campaign Food Connects Us 2025 National Nutrition Month. We believe we are connected to food and can connect further by learning to cook, food preparation, and meal planning. Also, by exploring where your food comes from and learning more about community resources such as SNAP, which is known as CalFresh in California, WIC, and local food banks. Additionally, food connects us to health. Healthy eating patterns include consuming fresh fruits like fruits and vegetables, whole grains, lean protein foods, and limiting added sugar, fat, and sodium. For those interested, they can connect with a nutrition expert by asking their primary doctor for a referral to a registered dietitian, or use the Find an Expert tool at eatright.org. March 10 is National Registered Dietitian Day. Food also connects us to our culture. We can experiment with recipes or cooking techniques from different cultures, include your own favorite cultural foods, or try new global flavors. And research shows that enjoying family meals when possible improves our health outcomes. Thank you very much to our city of West Covina and the mayor, Mr. Tony Wu, for recognizing National Nutrition Month in 2025. We believe that bringing attention to nutrition, education, and resources can be a gateway to health improvement for all of our citizens. If anyone has questions or cares to access additional information, I have access to PDF files on nutrition tips on several cooking topics, including eating on a budget, eating on the run, meals for older adults, smart snacking, among others. And these resources are available in English, Spanish, Arabic, Tagalog, Cambodian, and Vietnamese. Thank you.
Let's give her a hand. Thank you so much. Any audience have a question? How to eat with nutrition and tasty too? I know, okay, and I understand nutrition is important, but I like juicy steak and I like meat. It's that how to make sure that way to help people changing the diet and more into healthy diet. I think I read this thing, like how to help each other, the food connecters, how we, okay, make feel that when we prepare food together and to make different kind of feel. I think this is very enjoyable when I have my wife together with doing something and cook for the kid when they were little, but they grown big now. I'm more like a grandpa. Okay, so, but so how do you think, what should we do to change the habit, okay, and cut down the fast food and more go into more of a healthy food?
You know, I think the approach is more about a balanced diet. I mean, we have to be realistic too when trying to come up with our meals. So as long as you eat in moderation, I think that is key.
I think this is a good, okay, and so Cal Poly student, right? So any suggestion, maybe you can cook for us or something so we can, okay, maybe we can have some of, okay, yes, yes, exactly, okay, show us how to cook, okay, healthy, eat healthy, and connect people together. Do you have some kind of invitation, we can invite a West Covina resident to attend your class?
Oh, I could personally, I don't have any like demonstration for classes at Cal Poly Pomona, and I'm still learning to how to cook as well, because I'm still a student, so.
You're going to take over in one day, so you have to prepare yourself, okay? Like, once upon a time, I was like you, but look at them, I'm standing over here trying to host a meeting, pretend I know everything, okay? But, but the point is, I think, important, I think it's very, okay, healthy for you to show up today to tell people to eat healthy and prepare the feel, connect with the feel. And, and I think to make feel and with the family is extremely enjoyable. I think it's a family tradition. Remember, we cook turkey together, family together, so about, okay, a cultural thing and plus it's extremely a family gathering. I think this is, and how to put a food more healthier, okay, and more vegetable, less steak, like what I'm eating all the time, okay? So I think this is something important for us. So here, a West Covina proclamation, National Nutrition Month. Thank you so much for showing up, share with us and with all the City Council to eat healthy. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Okay, next one. National Women History Month, okay, traced the roots to the March 8, 1857. But first thing, I want to invite our West Covina firefighter, Brianna Falcando. Thank you so much, okay? And you can see, West Covina, same thing, no different than any other of a city and and all the department, we welcome female, okay, and to join to do any kind of, okay, and the task, because, okay, this is something important, because we want everybody to, okay, and basically develop their unlimited talent, and especially, I think you dreamed about the firefighter, and now you're the firefighter, and we welcome you. For a long time, West Covina doesn't have a female firefighter, this couple of years, finally, right? We have, we have you, we welcome you, okay? I think this is balance, and you can see the City Council leader, we look at, we have two females, a leader, okay, they are my boss, my wife's my boss, okay? Okay, and then we have a city manager, okay, is a, is a female too. So you can see our city, 50% of our city staff, they are female. They control the city, run the city, so you can see, very important. So, so for you, I don't want to read this thing, okay? I think more important to have you to share with us what, okay, Women's Month, a good meaning to you.
Good evening, my name is Brianna Falcando. I'm down at Station 122. It's an honor to be here, thanks for having me. I would like to say I love working for this city because they treat me as one of the boys, so it really doesn't have anything to do with male, female, just a firefighter.
Good. Don't care it's male or female, but too bad, this month is a female, okay, Women's Month, so we need to serenade, okay, otherwise I cannot go home, my wife will let me sleep in the garage, okay? I think that's important to basically to recognize, okay, because once upon a time, okay, not only the minority and the female cannot vote, okay? And now, finally, they can, and then gradually, everybody should go to their ability rather than their sex, race, creed, anything. So everybody create equal, and especially female, right now can be a leader, can be own the company, can be a leader, I think this is important, but this country, okay, walk for a long way become today, okay? Without our predecessor to fight, okay, I cannot stand over here, you cannot be a firefighter, but because all these civil rights, this, and that. But more important thing is about the Women's Month that we appreciate, not only they sacrifice to raise the family, kid, okay, at the same time, they become a brave maker, okay? And now, today, they are not a leader, and we need to recognize their effort and contribution. So you want to say more? Or you have enough? Are you sure? You only have one sentence, and I said the entire paragraph, okay? Okay, so anyway, proclamation, I want you to represent, okay, very important group of our city, 50% of our population, the women, that with months, speaking through 2012 month, okay, 12 months of the year, every, every day is Women's Day, because that's important, that's our mom, okay, the family is all anchor because the women's power, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, after presentation, okay, we have oral communication, okay, and nope, okay. Assistant City Clerk, okay, and basically, we are going to move to oral communication and if we have how many speaker, but let me read this paragraph so we understand, okay, we have a mutual respect if you want to speak, address to council. The comment are limited to three minutes per speaker unless modified by the presiding officer, okay, or the City Council majority request to speak on agenda item will be heard prior to request to speak on non-agenda item. Member of public may not engage in behavior that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting, including but not limited to speaking off topic, speaking beyond the speaker allowed time limit, making slenderest or profane remark, or using loud, threatened, and abusive language which disrupt, disturb, impede, or render invisible the orderly conduct of the meeting. Member of the public may not threaten any person with a physical harm or act in manner that may reasonably be interpreted as an imminent threat of physical harm. So basically, when you hear your name being called, please start line up in the center row, the time will start when you know it's called. So anyway, we just want to have a mutual respect, please, okay, you, you can criticize, you can say anything you want, but please have a mutual respect, okay, and to the city and to the public, to everybody. So how many speaker we have today? Okay, go ahead, have a first speaker.
Excuse me, we have 12 speakers now. Our first speaker is R. Robinson, followed by Jamie, followed by Clements.
You guys look a little bit nervous tonight.
I think I'm okay.
Okay. I can assure you, I don't believe our Streets Week being programmed the way it was was just fine. I don't think West Covina is in violation of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Under the state recently, the second city, Pacific Palisades, is burned down. They don't even know how to manage their forests and woodlands. Cities are burning down in California. I think this, the state of California may be in violation of SEQA, not the city of West Covina. You should join with the League of Cities and straighten that out. I don't want a street sweeping sign in my yard, just like the people of West Covina, they don't want a health department or street sweeping signs, and we're not in violation of SEQUA. And I don't think you guys can afford in the budget to put street sweeping signs wall to wall all over. I mean, our tax dollars should go for things that are more needed than street sweeping signs. You guys can't afford it. So I wanted to give you a, a phone number for a law firm, Raimi Thomas &amp; Moose. They're at 455 Capitol Mall in Sacramento, Suite 210. The phone number is 916-443-2745. Our, our Streets, they can assure you, they're, they're a SEQA law firm, a good one in Sacramento, and they can assure you that the city of West Covina is not in violation of any SEQA standards. Maybe the Calif, state of California is, but that's their problem, not our problem. And our Street Sweeping Program was fine the way it was. So that's what I wanted to say. I hope, I, I hope you guys can get this straightened out before we spend too much money. I mean, when it was first mentioned, I figured that you guys could figure it out, but apparently you haven't figured it out yet. And so we're gonna, when you get a dick taut from Sacramento, one good thing might be to just ignore it. I mean, they don't know what they're doing either. So I just want to stop talking before I get offensive.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate. I see you next time. And next speaker, please.
Jamie, followed by Clements, followed by Ackley.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jamie Zulliger. I am proud to say I was born, raised, and a Spartan, Class of 76, resident. I'm here on behalf of Picklers and myself, we're asking for our fine city to provide our residents with permanent designated well-lit outdoor pickleball courts. As you may know, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America. It is recognized across the country, and there are now tournaments for money and equivalent to USTA competitions with rankings and skill levels that are similar. Pickleball is a great sport, young and old, it's enjoyable for all. I'm happy to say I'm a part of September 2022 inauguration and First Group Picklers at Cameron Community Center, helping introduce anyone interested at both of the open houses. The sport, its popularity, growth over the country is getting attention from city leaders who are addressing the needs of pickleball facilities in their communities through the development from the ground up. New sites such as Hollenbeck Park, pickleball courts in Covina, and other demands can be be met by converting tennis courts, will make four pickleball courts. Walnut, Glendora, Duarte, Azusa, and other adjacent cities have done so. Typically, if there's adequate room, even basketball courts, just needs to be concrete and enough space. By establishing dedicated courts, we can provide a safe, enjoyable space for players to participate in this fast, exciting, growing sport. Not only will this help meet the growing demands for pickleball in our community, it promotes good health, mental health, physical, and strong community engagement for generations and backgrounds, all generations. Making new friends is the best part. I came back here from Huntington after 40 years playing tennis, and when I came back here at COVID, there was nothing to do physically, so that's a great thing. Additionally, having dedicated pickleball courts can bring economic benefits to our community. As previously noted, many local Picklers traveled to other cities to play dedicated courts. By establishing our own facility, we can attract these players and their families to our area, potentially boosting revenue for our local businesses and tourism. We urge you to consider the establishment of dedicated pickleball courts in our community. This investment will benefit our residents, promote healthy lifestyle, and potentially bring economic benefits to the city. Thank you.
Appreciate.
I have two.
Give to the Assistant City Clerk. Next speaker, please.
Clements, followed by Frank Ackley, followed by Daniel Acosta.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmembers. This is more of a follow-up to what Jamie is asking for regarding pickleball. I am actually a USA Pickleball Ambassador for the Western Region states that include California, Nevada, Idaho, Utah, Oregon, Washington, Hawaii, and Alaska. USA Pickleball is the governing body for the entire sport, and they have ambassadors all over the country who help to promote and educate about the fastest-growing sport in America, and that's why I'm here to help Jamie with her cause, as we did for Covina. That's how they established their permanent pickleball courts there as well. As a USA Pickleball Ambassador, we have access to many resources regarding pickleball, whether it's how you build a court, what kind of lighting you need, what kind of infrastructure you need. We have free access to all of that. I can say that my services as a USA Ambassador, USA Pickleball Ambassador is free, is purely voluntary, so please, if you do decide to pursue this, use me and abuse me. It's a free service. I've done it for other cities, I'm willing to do it for West Covina as well. So, yes, sir.
Can you provide information to our?
I sure will.
We can use and abuse you.
Absolutely. I have actually USA Pickleball Ambassador Business Cards, which I will gladly give to the city manager and the clerk. And just one more thing, I know that West Covina is undergoing a master plan, trying to develop what you guys want to do for the city. Well, there's a whole community here that is desiring pickleball courts for themselves. And I know that there are courts aplenty, whether it's court conversions at Del Norte Park, or even the recently razed lot of land by Cameron Community Center that may be a usable site. So a lot of possibilities for West Covina, and certainly, there's a big, huge, big, huge demand here, folks that actually want their dedicated courts. So thank you for your time, and.
Thank you so much, appreciate. Next speaker, please.
Frank Ackley, followed by Daniel Acosta, followed by Joanna G.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I live at the corner of Bainbridge and Sheffield. I have a fire hydrant in front. Sometime last year, I believe, the decision was made to remove the police department from issuing parking tickets that it's been turned over to the code enforcement officers. I have the number, I've called it, about 60% of the time, there is no answer. It goes to voicemail. I have not seen a code enforcement officer come out and give anybody a ticket for parking in front of the fire hydrant. Also, we have a problem there. I live across from the elementary school, California Elementary School, and the traffic at about 2 o'clock in the afternoon, 1:30 to 2 o'clock, is horrendous in there. They park three across sometimes because the buses are supposed to have the red curb for them. I see this morning that they've got a sign out that they, not a soapboard, but a sandwich board that they set out telling people that the red curb is for the buses. They still don't pay attention to it. The buses have to pull into the parking lot itself to make up their pickups. I talked to the corporal that is the head of your motor officers division, and he was down there one day with two other officers, and they were down there in the morning at about 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock, and they did have a good turnout for tickets. And it did make a impression. But I have told people several times, don't park in front of the fire hydrant, and I even had this one woman say that, well, it's not a working fire hydrant. This guy said, well, the police don't come out and give tickets anymore. So it's something that we need. I did witness one time, the fire truck come in there with EMS, and they had to wait to get through that traffic that was in front of there, because people were three cars deep going westbound. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Daniel Acosta, followed by Joanna G., followed by Alice.
Excuse me, sir, can you hold one second? Can you give to Assistant City Clerk regarding what number you dial and nobody answer? Can you provide information so we can find out what happened, okay? We want to make sure, improve our service, because I saw you leaving, otherwise, normally, we're waiting at the end of our communication. But just give to Assistant City Clerk, okay? And go ahead, sir.
Evening, everybody. My name is Daniel. I kind of live in the limbo zone over by where La Fuente, West Covina, and Walnut meet, so it's technically not my city hall, but it's about as close as I could physically get to one without going to Los Angeles. So I'm sure we all know all the crazy stuff that's going on in Washington and all the changes in policies regarding migrants and stuff like that, and I'm sure we all know there's kind of a culture of fear. I've definitely seen it with my friends and colleagues who might not have their citizenship or they're just migrant workers or whatever. So I just want to know, is there anything the city here, any precautions they're taking to make sure that people here feel safe, that they're willing to remain here, that they don't feel that they have to hide themselves because of all the stuff that's going on on the national scene? Thank you, that's pretty much all I had to say.
Thank you, thank you so much, okay? And the city manager can answer later on. Okay, next speaker.
Next speaker is Joanna G., followed by Alice, followed by Doug For.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and members of the committee. My name is Joanna G. and some upcoming programs at West Covina Library. We have Spotty Pet Storytime on March 7th, this is the last one until we come back, till we are on break at 10:15. Then we have our Familial Violence Awareness Prevention Program on Tuesday, March 11th at 2:00 PM. And next, we have our Women's History Month, The Art of Flowers, Making Flowers Out of Crape Pepper, on Tuesday, March 25th at 2:00 PM. And I also wanted to announce that this will be my last meeting with you guys. I do enjoy, I enjoyed being here in this wonderful city. The interim CLM, it will be Christina Larios, she will be taking my spot as I go back to Duarte Library to reopen the library after renovations.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and staff and residents. My name is Christina Larios. I work here next to West Covina Library at the regional office. I'm the Regional Youth Services Coordinator. I did work at West Covina Library many years ago, and I was formerly the manager at Balden Park Library, so I know this community well, I'm from this community, and I look forward to helping out temporarily until a permanent manager is assigned. Thank you.
I just have a question, why, you just started and now you already leaving us?
I was just the interim while my library was being renovated, and there was an.
So you're just entering for that time?
Yes.
And, okay, so now you go back to your permanent position, and I'm sorry, your name? And I'm sorry, your name?
Christina Larios.
Christina will be the permanent for our library?
Interm.
No, interim. I will be here helping out until a permanent manager is.
Okay, maybe we should bring the previous that with us for forever. Come back. She's, she's so good, okay? But thank you so much. Welcome. And next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Alice, followed by Doug For, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Good evening, Council. Gentlemen and ladies, I fell in love with West Covina back in 87, purchased my home, fell in love with my neighborhood because back in those days, we used to have permits where we.
Can you speak to the mic, please?
We would have block parties and they, in our street, everybody got a permit and we had barbecues for the Fourth of July. Everybody yard was open and we could go freely from house to house because we all knew each other. So that's why I fell in love with West Covina. Back then, I received in the mail a notification for the people to, first time to put up the sweep signs to pick the time for your streets. And my neighbor and I went and we set the time for our street and everything. It was never mentioned that down the line that they had to be five, I'm not sure if it's 500 feet or five, yeah, 500 feet from the corner, another sign. I woke up this morning to a sign in my yard. It took away the beauty of it. I sat on my porch having my coffee and I just retired last year and I see the sign, the sweeping right there. And it's so big, it's not pretty. We have one at the corner and I was wondering why we needed another sign where our houses, everybody in our street knows there's one at the back and one there. But I just said, oh my God, here I am trying to sit on my beautiful porch with my neighbors, enjoying my tea and there's this sign right there. Now, I am aware the city owns the easement, I get that. But it was never said in the beginning that there was going to be a sign put on your, closer to a home because they were always at the ends of the corner. So I'm here hoping that it can be removed.
Can you provide your street and your address?
I did put it.
Already and we were looking to it. I don't know the address, but I will get the address. You don't have to give out in public, but we will check about that. We want to make sure, maybe we can drive by to see what's going on. City Manager, maybe we'll take a look, okay? And we want to make sure we don't redundant, okay, to put sign. If we have time, okay, back, that should be enough or notification. But, but we don't know. We want, need to look into the public, we'll see how it goes. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Doug For, followed by Glenn Kennedy, followed by, I believe it's Matthew Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Doug For, resident of District 5, owner of restaurants in District 3. I have concerns regarding last meeting's presentation regarding the Health Department. It was explained that over the last four years, the city has invested almost a half a million dollars into a project with really only health fairs and a school district training to show for it. My expectations are with so much investment that we've invested, that you guys have invested, that, and the financial commitment, the following should have been addressed in the presentation. How many businesses would be monitored by the Health Department? Will this be an individual Health Department within the city or be an independent department? Specifically, what businesses will be included in inspections? Restaurants, convenience stores, senior housings, hotels? In a 4-0 vote by City Council, testing for the, with the West Covina Health Department has already been subcontracted out. How much more is going to be contracted out or intended to be contracted out? This community has been told that the Health Department will occur in phases. Where and what are these phases? What are the projected yearly costs of the Health Department? How many support staff, managers and inspectors are needed for this Health Department? Grants have been mentioned as a funding source. Who will be writing the grants? Who will be monitoring the grants? Where will the city Health Department be housed at? Have businesses that will be affected by the new city Health Department been surveyed regarding their desire to even have a city-run Health Department? Over the last four years, what input has this city received from businesses that will be factored into the current plans? Those are my questions I thought would be talked about last time. Four years, a half a million dollars. What I, I would have expected a little bit better of a presentation. Myself, other business owners and the community members really appreciate Mr. Cantos's respect for transparency. City business owners and the community deserve information regarding the work completed and financials spent on this project. How in the world can West Covina run a Health Department when we can't even run our own 911 Fire Dispatch? That is what is mind-boggling, one of the items mind-boggling to me. You guys took the Fire Dispatch and moved it up to Central California and we don't even run that anymore. But you guys want to run a Health Department? And also, you guys gave TransTech a half a million dollars on the contract in March of 2022. Where, what have they done with that half a million dollars? Thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Glenn Kennedy, followed by Matthew Gonzalez, followed by Mr. G.
Glenn Kennedy, 62-year resident. I went to Edgewood, by the way, Class 80. I'm here, not to criticize, but just giving my opinion. You know, you are planning on renaming part of Azusa Avenue after Grace Napolitano, which I'm very good friends with, I love her to death, but I am wholeheartedly against this decision. I don't think any street should be named after any politician, especially when I have 18 war heroes sitting on that wall who don't get no love. We have many people, pioneers in this city. We have Benjamin Maxine, we have Joe Hearst, we have Cora Serenike's grandfather, who, if it wasn't for him, there wouldn't be no West Covina. He's the one who went out and actually got the 500 signatures to start this city. The problem was, he died a month before. So he probably would have been our first mayor. There's no mention about him. So I, that's, this is my opinion. And since we brought it up, since this is brought up, I, I think that we have 18 war heroes on that wall. We have two more that need to go on. I think what we should do is find out where they lived and we put those honorary street signs up like we do for the fallen police officers. And that's just my two cents. And I know I only get three minutes. Thank you very much. We won't waste no more of your time.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, next speaker, please.
Matthew Gonzalez, followed by Mr. G., followed by Tony Liu.
All right. Hi, I'm Matthew. I'm in District 3. I've lived next to Franciscito and that specific area has been hit hard with parking. The other city ballpark is blocking it really hard. There would be no way for me to actually park if that street cleaning showed up because the driveway is only, my driveway is only 10 feet and the cars are 16 feet. So it is, it's impossible by the car distance and also by the other cities nearby. The only way that I would be able to park is if I go all the way to La Fuente, which is like about 10, 10 minutes away. And I don't really want to do that. Sometimes I work in San Diego and I drive three hours that way, three hours back. The last thing I want to do is go another 10, 10 feet of walking. That's, that's pretty much the gist of it. I just don't want to really, the whole street of our area is really condensed and I just don't really want to deal with that. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Can you provide your address to?
Yeah, it's listed. All right, thank you.
Yeah, next speaker, please.
Mr. G., followed by Tony Liu.
Good evening, Council. I got a quick question. Spring Fest is coming up. I met one of your recreational leaders today, going through businesses here in old downtown West Covina. It was really good. You're telling them, you're telling the owners, making them aware of what's going to happen down there. You're going to ask them to limit their parking, which they're going to have street people walking around, which is nice for the businesses. But when you take the time to have people employed in the city to do that, it's great. But most of these people are talking about parking and safety. If you go any time of the day, which I've spent the last several weeks in several of those businesses, the back of that street, the alley, which is part of the city, you have crackheads, people getting high, smoking. The police need to be there. This poor man's business has two or three street people hanging out there drinking alcohol and smoking. He's got a great business. West Covina has always been about small businesses. Talk about restaurants, it's one of the few ones that you actually sit down at. It's not a drive-through. That's the type of business we need. When I was going to school with that young lady over there, most of the people who worked or went to school, their fathers and their mothers owned businesses. That's what made the city great. And it didn't act like Los Angeles. It was independent. It was not the Valley. It was a San Gabriel Valley, which is independent cities. If we have a Health Department, great, whether his question should be answered, that'd be nice. Because that's really what the people want to know. How, what, when, why? I asked almost two years ago from the city attorney, what do you consider a resident and what you consider a citizen? And why do we pay people to come into the city that hand a Clark bar and a bottle of water and call it a win because they talk to somebody on the street? If we remove them or act like the city just down 605, that it's not getting the money, not going to do the city or what the state wants, they're going to be independent. Independent thought is what makes West Covina strong. Now, for the sweep sweeping. My question is, once we establish the timelines for the sweep sweeping and the days are missed, are we going to pay a tax for being if we miss pay?
Thank you, Mr. G. Okay, next speaker, please.
Tony Liu.
I may not look it, but I'm an 80-year-old man.
You look good.
Where pickleball has given me a new lease on life. I played racquetball for over 30 years, but in the summer of 2022, I developed osteoarthritis in my wrist that was so painful, I had to retire from racquetball. And then I found pickleball. And I tell you, it's a wonderful sport. I've made a lot of friends. I get so much exercise. It's a, it's a form of, it's a great recreation. And, you know, I, I've been playing at Cameron. It's one of the places that I played at and Cameron's been really wonderful. But there are times when it's really quite inadequate. We have sometimes close to 40 people wanting to play on three courts. And that's one reason why I'm here with Jamie and Clem and several of other of my friends to ask the city to really seriously consider building permanent courts for the city. There are many cities nearby already, such as Covina, Glendora, Laverne, Pomona, Azusa, Duarte, Arcadia, Diamond Bar. All of these places have built permanent courts and they're being well-used. And one thing that we do quite often, after playing, a group of us will go out and visit one of the eateries. You know, so that also can help the local community. But I tell you, it's also a great way of building friendship with people. As I said, I recently celebrated my 80th birthday and had a number of my new pickleball friends come to help me celebrate. So I really do ask that this, this council, the city will seriously consider building these permanent courts for our use. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
No further speakers, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Okay, and the City Manager, would you please respond some of the speaker?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. So a big topic tonight that was brought up was between pickleball and street sweeping. So we'll start with street sweeping. We are, we have moved forward with weekly street sweeping. We ordered and are now in, in the process of installing the signs throughout the city as some of the residents have mentioned. We will follow up with the resident regarding relocating the sign on her property. I guess it was on the public right of way, but there are laws that dictate where we have to locate the signage so that we can then enforce it. And so we will work as best as we can with that property, with that resident. But we are moving forward with installation of the signs and they are going throughout the community. And because of this, during this transition, we will have suspended parking enforcement because as the signage goes up, it doesn't necessarily meet with the existing street sweeping that was bi-monthly. And so we will be working on that. I think we are looking at having all of the signage installed mid-April. So that project, weekly street sweeping is moving forward. The street sweepers have started going weekly and we have made those announcements. We are also going to be doing an educational campaign to our residents so that they know when their new street sweeping day is going to be. It's also available on our city website, on the GIS map, so that you can see what your weekly street sweeping schedule will be. And then second, pickleball courts. So we don't have dedicated pickleball courts, but we do have pickleball courts at the Del Norte Park, at the tennis courts. We do have the pickleball striping, so that is an amenity that we can provide as of today regarding pickleball. And I believe there is a pickleball league that plays out of the senior center at Cortez Park. In addition, though, there was mentioned that we are starting the Park Master Plan. We are looking to have community meetings early April to get feedback from our residents. So that would be another great opportunity for the pickleball community to come in and provide a feedback and input on the need for pickleball in our community in West Covina. Regarding the parking enforcement for the fire hydrant, we have the gentleman's address so we can make sure that code enforcement goes out there to enforce parking in front of a fire hydrant. And then the resident that wanted to know about what West Covina is doing, you know, thank you for reaching out. We understand that federal immigration policies can create uncertainty and we want to ensure you that our city is committed to fostering a safe and welcoming community for all residents. Our local law enforcement focuses on our community's safety and does not enforce federal immigration laws. So they're focused on protecting our community, making us safe here in West Covina. Joanna G., thank you for being in the room for these last couple of months and we look forward to working with you, Christina, moving forward and getting the updates from the library. Spring Festival, yeah, we are going to be having the Spring Festival next, at the end of the month, so we hope everyone comes in. And I think that covers it for me, if there's anything else.
City Council, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if you could just make sure you look into the street signage for street sweeping because a lot of my residents of District 1 have also voiced concerns that, I think they're either eight or 10 feet high and it's really, really high to at a residential.
That's been corrected already.
Yes, okay, great. So thank you.
Other, other City Council? Okay, I just have talked about Bainbridge, okay, and the street regarding the, the school parking. I think we just need to send our traffic, police officers, the motorcycle over there to make sure control, look like it's out of control currently. Okay, and I think our, our chief can have our traffic enforcer to make sure you're not double, triple parking and you can, you block the street. Okay, and regarding the fire hygiene we're talking about, to make sure that either our police department or our code enforcement or public safety department to make sure no car, and we should paint it in red. So in that way, to make sure people don't park because in case something happened, then we can utilize the fire hygiene, okay? So other than that, any, other than that, any, if none, okay? Thank you so much. And the City Manager, report, please. Bye, guys. Drive carefully. And join.
Wear your seatbelt.
Yeah, join the master plan, okay, community outreach. Okay, thank you. Okay, City Manager, go ahead.
Just wanted to highlight, we had envisioned Toyota West Covina grand opening and ribbon cutting this, on the February 19th. It'll create approximately 115 full-time and part-time positions. It'll create approximately 115 full-time and part-time positions. It was a relocation from their existing facility to expand their dealership so that they can provide better service for residents and be able to meet the high demand of car sales at the facility. So I'm very happy to announce their grand opening. We also had some improvements at Del Norte and Orangewood Park. The light pole replacements that help provide enhanced luminosity and security throughout the parks. Installation took place around playgrounds, restrooms, picnic area, pavilions, and pathways. The, we were able to, a long overdue project, but replace the traffic signal on Vincent and Glendora. So the replacement was completed yesterday. Really happy to announce that West Covina was awarded a $4.7 million grant in the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Cycle 12. And so that's going to include, I believe, 64 signalized intersections. It includes insulation of retro reflective backplates, replacement of signal heads, protected left turn phasing, and implementation of rotation intervals. So that's going to be a big project for the city and it's going to help improve safety within our community. Just wanted to highlight some of the work that our public work staff is doing. At the Sportsplex, they've been doing some curb and gutter drainage improvements to address some of the issues there. The estimated data completion is this Saturday and it's being done by our Public Works Department staff. Next, as I mentioned earlier, street sweeping signage installation commenced February 17th and then it will be completed within 50 days, which includes mid-April. Until then, parking enforcement has been suspended. Friendly reminder to please, to partake in our city website redesign survey. It's up until March 13th. Oh, and then I wanted to announce also tonight that we have a new GIS layer on our website and it's for CIP projects. So you can go to this website. Oh, it's loading. So this layer will help share with our community. They could see what projects, CIP projects, are happening in the community, where the funding is coming from, and the schedule for these CIP projects. And this is just a way that we can share with the community all of the work that the city is doing to help improve their neighborhoods, their communities.
A little bit more detail talking about CPI, CIP, okay, capital improvement project. And the red represents what?
Okay, so let me pull it on mine, sorry. So I can, it's a little hard to do it from here. So each project has its icon.
Hey, please.
So the HIP Cycle 10 improvements are, they have their logo, the icon, and it's in orange. And it's a similar icon for HIP Cycle 12, which is the red color one. It's, we got news of the grant. So it still says on the website that the pending, the application is pending, receiving grant funding. But we have now confirmed we have.
For traffic signal or?
The traffic signals, yes, yes. The, some of the.
The included stop sign, flashing stop sign, the improvement of the traffic condition.
I believe this is specific for traffic signals and not for stop signs.
Okay.
Yeah. So for the Civic Center, I'm sorry, for the Cortez roof, Senior Center Roof Replacement, it's a purple icon and you can pull up on it. Sorry, if you can click on it, Roxanne.
You put in your question? Go ahead.
No, just, is it easy to utilize a user-friendly for the community when they log into this? And I guess when you click on each one, it gives you a description and further information, including the details?
Yeah, so if you, it's kind of hard, I don't know if you can see it there, but it does. So for the Senior Center Roof Replacement, the city is replacing the roof in HVAC system at the Cortez Senior Center. The project includes removal and replacement of the roof on the southern building as well as refurbishment of the roof on the northern building. It gives you the timeframe and then it gives you the location and then the funding source for that particular project and then a contact. So if you want additional information.
And then if the CIP project has been completed, will it still be there? It's not going to be deleted?
We'll probably create a layer of completed projects so that it doesn't get very overwhelming with too many layers. But yeah, we will keep that information on a GIS layer that we can pull up easily.
Thank you.
Continue.
So the park LED installation is also on there and it has its separate icon. So you can click on that one. And so just, it has a brief description where the funding is and then the contact information. So like when we do our street rehab payment work, it'll have the information there outlining what streets are going to get repaved and then the contact information for the contractor if there's any issues or concerns. So we hope that this is a beneficial tool for our residents that they'll be able to utilize, know what's going on. And if they see some type of work happening, they can come to the website and check, oh, this is, you know, HISAP or it's this project.
So this one also, I know you said street repaving, but you can, is, does this allow you to type in your address and then gives you that area? And then, of course, like that, well, you mentioned street paving, right? Like if they, they want to know when their streets are paved or when it's going to happen?
So that there's another layer for that, but when, when that CIP is active, it'll be on here?
Okay, and this one also includes the tree trimming?
No, it doesn't. We have the tree trimming on the resource map.
Can we all condense into one?
Yeah.
That would be easier.
I thought you clicked on resource map when I saw it. When you showed the full map and then it said, in your GIS, it said resource. See, it said, yeah, West Covina Resource Map.
Yeah.
For the GIS, right?
So the, yeah.
I see.
If you can scroll down, Roxanne.
We want to be user-friendly.
Yes.
So these are different layers that we have for the GIS map. If I, I'm going to scroll back so I can. So we have City of West Covina Council District, City of West Covina Fire Department map, zoning map, Art and Public Police's map, Police Department map, specific plans within the city, the landscape maintenance districts, bus stop and routes, and bus routes map. Then we have the five-year citywide residential pavement program plan, the weekly street sweeping map that is, has the current weekly street sweeping schedule, the West Covina Report and Issue Dashboard, and then the CIP Project map that we are launching tonight.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go down a little bit, Paulina.
Oh, good, it's Roxanne.
Oh, Roxanne, sorry.
Yeah, this is the resource map that has all of the layers.
Click on District One. Click on District One.
I click.
Oh, look at this, the new council member there.
Just needs to update the councils.
Blow up? Okay, yes, thank you. I click again.
It needs to be updated.
Yeah, the, it needs to say mayor.
You need an update. Okay, he's no longer the mayor. I haven't changed my name yet. Okay. I have a question. I've been all the city and I remember I went to Pasadena to do some business and I got the parking ticket because, but I remember there, there, there are no parking or the parking violation thing is kind of small. Okay, our is like gigantic, like huge P and so can we, okay, agree on what, why we have a large huge, okay, and the block people's, okay? And I know, we understand, okay, we need to let people know. But it's just a street sweeping post, okay? And regularly for a couple of hours, people move their car so, so our sweeper can clean the street. And I can say the street look much cleaner right now than last year because it's weekly now, okay? And, but, okay, I think the parking is such a invasive, okay? And a huge sign and all the, all the place of city. I think that is really poor city. We want the beautification, but we don't want, we want people to understand we have let, okay, street sweeping weekly in that period of time in different street. But I think the sign is too huge. I don't know, they said big with no parking. I saw the picture right there. Is that the one, the lady talking about a gigantic sign in front of her front yard? And you just have, on your website, you just have a no parking P? Okay, right there. Is that the sign we post?
What's the dimension?
I would have to pull that up. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, because nobody even sees a small sign. Okay, okay, they hang on the, okay, on the, on the, the street light or post rather than a gigantic, okay, and a big post with big sign on people's property on the street or residential. I think, I don't know, I haven't seen it yet. I want to take a look. It may be, okay, make our city look horrible. Okay, the sign should be more discreet. I know we have to see it, but it's, the people should understand after, after the pickup day, the next day will be the certain time, the hours, four hours, they need to move their car so we can clean the street for them.
The, the sign or the photo that's on the website is just a stock photo. It's not representative of what the sign size that we're using for street sweeping signage. So I can get, I can provide you that information.
Would you please? Okay, and maybe you can show us. We can travel around to see the new installed sign, what they look like. Okay, thank you. Any other question? Yeah, go ahead. Okay, and the council member?
Yeah, there were, this one zoomed in, but it, it's, it's a regular sized one. But the problem was is that the poles that they're putting them on are like 10 feet high or eight feet high. So they're putting super tall poles in people's lawns and yards without, but it looks very tacky right now.
Is it normally, the sign should be tied, okay, on the street, street, street light? Okay, and I saw most of the, in that way, we would cut down the cost. The cost would be cut down rather than we have to put the poles, put the foundation. It would cost a lot of money for so many signs.
There is requirements as to the distance that these signs have to go. So if there's a light pole that we can utilize, I believe we can. But if not, then we do have to create a pole or.
Is this a time we, okay, we trans tech, the traffic engineer to talk about this? Is that a good time to help them?
Yeah, we can have them come and provide a presentation.
I'm talking about right now, to answer the question.
Oh, can I have either you, Jen, or Brian come up and help answer the question?
Because, okay, we are going to put so many signs around our city and our street. We don't want to make mistake and we have to take it down. And that would be a horrible waste. Okay, we want to make sure you're doing the right thing. Trans tech engineer, okay, and you need to be responsible because I saw the sign, it's all tied up with a post rather than you put the anchor with a big post eight feet high. That's cost so much money and doesn't even look good for the resident. We don't want to intrude resident privacy and put a sign all the places on their residential street.
The California MUTCD and as well as the vehicle code has guidelines on where signs need to be posted. At every entrance to a street, if you can turn right, you got to have a sign. If you're going left, you got to have a sign. If there's another street entrance, so that people, when they enter any part of the street, they know there's street sweeping. Because it's found that if you don't put it on one side of the street, you put it on the other, then the people who park may not know there was street sweeping, get a ticket, and then it comes back. So that's where the sign placement is. I think Paulina said we will get the addresses and they can look and see where they were installed and see if there's a better place. Now, the bottom of the sign, from the curb face to the bottom of the sign needs to be seven foot so that if someone's walking by, they're not going to hit their head or someone's on a bicycle. So that's maybe why, you know, that's the sum of the standards. Now, I don't know about the eight and 10-foot poles, but we'll have to check into that.
Quick question, okay? Because I parked my car on Temple City Boulevard because the, the business parking lot is paving, okay? So I don't know, that is the, okay, street sweeping day. So I got a ticket, okay? And I didn't see any sign, but they told me the sign at the beginning, at the end of the street. But in the middle, they don't have the sign. I still have to pay the ticket. But I just wanted to say, okay, and can we do the, okay, start the street and end the street? And in the middle, do we need to put a sign? We don't need it, right?
It's only if someone can drive from another street into the middle. It's a T intersection. You know, and there's another T somewhere. You got to put signs where anyone entering a street can see it. Or you'll have people with getting tickets and they'll be coming back.
Go ahead, may I put in?
On, so I wanted to know if there's already original signs for whatever other signs on the streetlights. Are you putting this one above and maneuvering that? Or are you just making another pole and just adding additional?
No, they should be putting on, they can add that sign with another sign as long as it doesn't conflict. It can be on a street, street light. It just depends where the street light is.
Got it. Since this is not on the agenda, I just want a quick question for you guys. So thank you so much for your answer. Appreciate. Okay, okay, council member, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I know I sent you guys a couple and you guys have acted quickly. So thank you for that. But there's so many more out there with the same situation. So if we could somehow create a concept to, we need to go expect the contractors' work because it's just too many for, I mean, not every resident in my district is going to text me, but I've drove around my area and I've seen the same issue, issue after issue. So we need to follow up on that with the contractor.
Go ahead, may I put in?
Pretty much, I think, I guess it seems like the council agrees. We just don't want signs to be flooded all throughout the whole city. If we can do whatever the bare minimum is, that is less intrusive, then we'd like to move forward with that and make sure if you can just keep an eye on that so we don't have others coming in mentioning it. Thank you.
I think the purpose, we want to beautify and sanitation, okay, for the city. But we don't want, because we're doing that, that we post sign all the places and trembling their privacy and make it so ugly. So we don't want to fix something but end up, but we dirty something. So, so we want to make sure the sign is there, but it's not going to intrude people's visual impact and the, and the plus, okay? And so big and intrude their privacy. I agree with them. If I have a nice yard in the front, then suddenly you have a big ugly sign in front of their face, I will be not happy, okay? So, so we need a courtesy to make sure, okay? And so, and so contractor we hire. We need to set up the, maybe presentation from trans tech to talk about, okay, on the traffic issue and the purchase issue and the contract issue. So we have oversight and to make sure, okay, everything is properly addressed, okay? And we just beforehand to make sure we don't create a mistake and then later we have to remove and this, we don't, they happen many times on the government. We don't want to waste. Yeah, go ahead.
What is a sign dimensions again?
I don't know. I'd have to get back to you. I don't have the thing.
And that's the minimum size, right? You guys are not making it?
No, I don't believe.
No, it's a regular one.
Regular, regular.
Regular ones, yeah.
So it's not a scary, big, huge?
The poles issue.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Have to check. We could go over the design schedule for the contractor.
Okay.
And for the ones that they still have not.
Council member, go ahead.
Yeah, and then I think the other issue that our residents were having is that the contractor on some housing locations are choosing the easy way out. So they're putting in the grass and it's not in the regulations that you're explaining earlier. They're not following that. They're just doing the easy way. So let's put it in the grass instead of putting in the cement, which is a little more, probably more expensive for them to do. But, so it has to be consistency. It can't just be on someone's yard because it's easy.
We need a project manager, okay? I don't know, it's Robert, is the CPI project manager to supervise the situation or they have somebody to supervise all this installation? Okay, we want to make sure, okay, everything should be properly, not just going free and create issue for the city and waste the money. Okay, thank you. We are going to set up the agenda for this, city manager, would you please?
Yes.
And we can have you come back with more detail, okay? And show the picture, everything, because it's going to have an entire city and they're going to go to everybody's street. So we want to make sure, okay, everything, do it properly and not just hastily and haste make waste. Okay, thank you. Okay, and then, okay, city managers, anything else?
Just upcoming events, we have the Spring Festival and the March 29th to 30th and the Easter Extravaganza. Save the date for April 12th. So.
Very good.
Includes my presentation.
Thank you so much and we move into, okay, consent calendar, okay? There's only have a three item, okay? a three item, okay? If anybody want to approve, otherwise do I have a motion to approve?
I will, uh, recuse myself for number two.
Recuse yourself, number two, okay? Do I have a motion to approve one, two, three?
Motion.
Motion, okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And vocal please.
I have a, a motion by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, a second by Councilwoman Diaz to approve consent calendar items one through three with Councilmember Gutierrez abstaining on item number two. Councilman Contos?
He's not here.
He's out today. Uh, Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Uh, abstain.
Abstain, uh, upset item number two.
Aye with it, yes.
Okay, you should, yes beside the two.
Yes, besides, uh.
Abstain of two.
Understood, thank you. Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye. Motion approved, and then go to the present department, regular matter. Okay, number four, okay, and, um, okay, who is going to present this agenda?
I can present it.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, the request was made to bring back the city manager's purchasing authority and looking at placing the purchasing authority at 50,000. So before you is a staff report, just providing information on, um, the history of how we got to the purchasing authority that the city manager has at this time. It included comparison to other cities as well with, uh, with the purchasing authority for the city managers within those cities that range between 250 all the way to 30,000. Um, I believe that's it. So, uh, this, there's various options that were presented. The option that was part of the Mother May I request was to bring the city manager purchase authority to 50,000, um, and so that would be option two, if that's, uh, the direction that council would like to go.
Okay.
And then I have Assistant Finance Director Mario Lisa, if we have any additional questions on the report.
Okay, got it, okay, and, uh, council member, anybody want to ask the question? Um, council member Gutierrez?
I think no.
Oh, you don't have a question? Anybody have a question? Uh, then I can, I can, I can say something, okay? If nobody, okay, want to say something first? Uh, I, I think, okay, we, in the 2021, uh, we approve, uh, the previous city manager during the pandemic, and he requires the 200,000 so we can purchase in much faster during the pandemic period, okay, for $200,000, okay? And I think that time myself and, uh, Mayor Proton and, uh, Councilwoman Diaz was on the city council and, uh, we agree. And at the time, I talked to, um, okay, the, the, okay, uh, the finance director, Robin Burr, and they, and she say, oh, yeah, because much faster due to, so we can don't waste time because of pandemic, that time, it's pretty severe in 2020 and 2021. So, but now, I think, uh, we now it's a pandemic time, so maybe we need to, okay, it's not like, uh, okay, we want to restrict the, 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 the spending, it's we want to restrict, okay, and, uh, any of this, the city council as a taxpayer, watch dog, we want to make sure how they spend, so we just ratify, okay? And so if they, each department, they want to do something, uh, they come to us, they put agenda, unless it's something is rushed, they can, we have a special meeting. So in that way, our job is to control the budget, make sure we don't overspend. So I think that's the reason, uh, last time we had Mother May I for this, and I agree, is make sure we, each time for taxpayer, we properly spend, okay, and we approve in the open of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, agenda. So in that way, and I, I, I read it, each city different, but I think it's about based on the budget. Okay, for example, Pasadena budget is $900 million. It's almost 1 billion. I hope, it's my dream to one day West Covina can have that kind of a budget. So we, we work very hard, hopefully to bring more development money into our city because we currently, we only, how much? Okay, and 160, not even 200 million dollars. So it's a big city, why we only, okay, not even 200,000, 160 million dollars, something around there. So we need to increase our, our income, so mainly not from the taxes, but from the development, hotel, et cetera, et cetera, and coming to bring, uh, invest money to us. So, so each city have a different budget and their city manager have a different authority to use without the city council, okay, nagging on the city manager's back to put on the agenda. So, so anyway, and then if we go to the budget, every city, El Monte is what, 50,000 or 35,000, okay, and, uh, same, 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 same size of, uh, population like us. And Pasadena has a more budget. Burbank, they have a Burbank airport, so their budget is pretty intense. And we hope we will be the like Burbank budget too, one day, we're going to make it. But currently, we still not in their year, so we need to wisely to spend every dime. So anyway, yeah, go ahead, Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to make sure, I know I put in a request a few months ago to any purchasing is, um, to be given West Covina businesses the priority, so whenever we purchase anything needs to be West Covina. So I just want to make sure this is the same, that, um, it applies that, again, any purchases.
Shop local?
Shop local, that West Covina business gets that priority.
Especially purchase cards, because it's a big.
Well, anything, anything. I mean, even with the purchasing cards, it needs to be here, all the businesses here in West Covina, even though you're close or you live wherever, needs to be done here. Um, I know that, hopefully that starts fiscal by July 1st, but I just want to put that up since we're talking about purchases.
I, I think a lot of city, uh, like Pasadena, they, they, they request the purchase would be local first, unless if local, uh, cannot provide, then they go to other area, but they, they want, if we want to all residents shop local, then government should shop local first, okay? If we not even shop local, how can we persuade? But we need each dollar come to us so we can pay all the expenditure. Uh, other than that, okay, uh, now you want to talk, remember, go ahead.
You're reminding me, that's okay now. Uh, yeah, like Mayor Wu said, I, I think, uh, you know, one of the reasons why I felt this item was very important to make a council request on was because, uh, we as a council have a responsibility to our residents and we are all committed to ensuring that accountability to our residents and making sure, uh, every penny is accountable for in, in our community, in our city, and, and making sure that it, it could grow and, and be prosperous. And I also want to say I commend, uh, our city manager, Paulina Morales, for not being at all, uh, against, uh, this proposal, um, and, and for being supportive of, of this change as well. So I commend you for doing that, Paulina, because you're showing that you are as well support accountability for this community. So thank you.
And so we are going to move down from 200,000 to 50,000? Is that the common consensus?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve option number two.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay, uh, vocal please.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gutierrez, a second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado for option number two for item number four. And item number four is consideration of amending purchasing thresholds. Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and a motion approved for zero. Okay, and then we move to next item, uh, item number five, presentation regarding the business license administrations, uh, complete compliance with compliance service. Okay, I think this is Mother May I request by, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez. Okay, and who's going to present this?
I believe it was your Mother May I.
This is mine?
Yeah.
Yeah, like joint.
Fine. I take the question.
So West Covina, um, contracts, uh, HDL to manage all of our business licenses. Um, we many years ago used to do it internally, and I don't remember off the top of my head when we switched over to, um, contracting with HDL, but, um, I will have Ian Davis come up, uh, and provide a presentation and, um, and Christine, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and city council members, I'm Christine Gagné with HDL. We have a, listen, thank you. If you could, uh, go to slide two, please. So this slide really depicts the process for when a business license is, um, provided to HDL, again, acting on behalf of West Covina. And this is the process flow for in-city application only. So the initial application is submitted and it kind of, um, workflow through the process, going through the approvals that the city requires, the taxpayers invoiced, and then we process the application, issue the certificate. The key stats on the below just gives you an opportunity to see how hard we're working for the city of West Covina. I would say most notably that for 2024, that we answered almost 5,000 emails and phone calls were answered. And that 88% of all business licenses were renewed into 2024. That doesn't mean that there was a reduction of 12% of in-city businesses, but mostly the 12% that didn't renew are going to be transient contractors. For the 2020, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. For the 2020, for the 2025 stats, obviously, we're only into the third month of the year, but again, we're almost up to probably close now, 1,000 emails and phone calls, and 82% have already started to renew for the 2025 year. Next slide, please. In relationship to the renewals, so every business license is renewed annually. Most of them will have an expiration date with December 31st. There are a few caveats where they expire in June 30th, where that's going to be our contractors and the residential rental units. The, um, payment is due for those accounts that expire in January. The, um, expiration date, I'm sorry, being December 31st, the, the payment is due 30 days thereafter. We do have an opportunity to send several renewal notices to those businesses, and 30 days after the expiration date is when a penalty fee is enacted. I think one important thing to let you guys know is that all of our tax specialists up in Fresno are professionally trained to answer all questions by the community as well as city staff, and we pride ourselves on, um, effective and professional, uh, customer service. Thank you.
And you want to say something, go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
Next slide, please. This one's my, uh, my side, my side of the aisle, which is our compliance program. So our compliance discovery program overview, um, this is just a quick, same type of deal we had with the renewal structure, where we have the identification phase, where this is where we identify businesses who are currently operating without, outside of compliance. Uh, we move into our mailing phase, where this is the notifications that we're sending out to taxpayers to get them registered. This moves into our registration process phase, which is our processing of applications of the businesses who were in this non-compliance status. And finally, it gets to the remittance stage where we're remitting any of the new finding revenue that we have. Um, I'll quickly move over to the next slide if you can, um, just to talk about a little bit of the efforts that have happened with this compliance program. Um, so Paulina mentioned this a couple of seconds ago, the city of West Covina started with HDL in 2015, so we're on our kind of 10th anniversary of our contract at this point. Um, I've worked with the city of West Covina specifically for the last 10 years, because I, this is when I started at HDL, is when I started working with the city of West Covina. And during that time, I've ran the compliance program since the very beginning. And I've worked closely with Paulina, um, with past city managers, past finance directors on ensuring that every business in the city is paying the appropriate business tax. Those efforts have led to a total of $6 million in findings for the, for the city of West Covina. Um, of that $6 million, that is a, a combination of about 1,200 new businesses who were completely unregistered, people that were just not paying the tax whatsoever, and within that is also 1,300 businesses that were delinquent at some point, whether it be for one year, two years, three years, whatever the case may be, who we got into compliance. The last few years has seen a little bit of a reduction, mainly because of, uh, one fact, which is that all of your commercial rentals, which are the businesses that are renting out commercial property like the Plaza West Covina or other types of businesses like that, are completely registered and have not fallen out of registration, uh, for a long period of time, mainly because of how up to date we are on that, because of how dependent your business license revenue is on that particular category. Um, to give you a quick little summary of that, most of your businesses, like your restaurants and other type of miscellaneous retail businesses of that nature, they pay based on employees. That's usually like a 200, maybe 300 dollar tax, depending on what's going on. Your commercial rentals are paying a 1% gross receipts tax, so it can be large dollar amounts that they end up paying, and that's where a significant amount of your revenue is coming from when it comes to the business license program. We have cleaned up all of that, a, a solid 90 to 90% of, 99% of your businesses in the commercial rental category are registered. Over the last five years, we've focused on the other groups, which is why if you see that little graph right there, there's that three years of 500,000, 200,000, and 400,000 dollars in discovery revenue. That's all coming from general businesses, businesses that are just unlicensed and need to get licensed, and that number is going to continue to get smaller, because the more effort that we put in, the less unlicensed businesses that they're going to be, and the more consistent your revenue is going to be year after year. So that's, I believe, the last slide in the presentation, but we're open to any questions.
And council, anybody have a question? Yeah, okay, council member Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yeah, um, and then how much are you making off the, this, so you, how much do you make off this partnership?
So our fees, so for administration program, it's a flat fee. So that flat fee is, I think, because it's adjusted with CPI, so I think it's at about $17 per account. Our compliance fees are contingency fee based, so when we're sending out notifications, there's no direct cost to the city. We only get a 25% contingency fee on anything that we're actually identifying. So over the 10 years of the project, if you look at that $6 million number, it's about, not doing really good math in my head, but about 1 million, I think, over that 10 years. But it's only based on findings that we have, not on any, but there's no go-forward revenue that we're collecting on or anything else like that.
And if, uh, if a business had an issue, is there like a contact process as the, that the city does currently? Uh, like if there's, if there was a complaint, is there someone in planning or that will contact you or?
So I have a pretty good relationship with Paulina, because we've worked together for so long, and I know that there's businesses that come to her, generally speaking, any, and most businesses just know to contact us because we've just been so entrenched here for a long time. I remember in the beginning of the West Covina partnership that there was a lot of confusion of who handles what, because there was still like a business license person who used to work in city hall and just now works here, so there was that kind of face of the city that used, that people used to go to. Um, that has kind of changed. Most businesses know that they have to go through us and they have to contact us, but if there are any issues or if there is a problem, or if there's something, they usually go through city management or they go through a different department, whichever department is experiencing the, the lift, I should say. Another thing I would like to mention is that, um, because I mentioned the direct cost as far as the contingency fee is concerned, um, a supplementary kind of activity that the city of West Covina has within their fee schedule, um, is a recovery fee, which gets passed on to the, like, to the actual business. So our fee is actually never directly paid by the city of West Covina. It's always directly paid by the, um, by the business owner when we're doing our discovery and compliance programs.
Okay, and then do you have like, uh, if a, if a community resident was to call, you guys have a call center, I believe, or?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and then if they were to call you and lodge a complaint, is there a process you guys do to track that complaint and handle it or?
So, um, we separate those into two different categories, so it gets a little bit more of a complicated issue. So if there's an administration complaint as far as our renewals and new applications and the kind of day-to-day where there's like a customer service complaint, those immediately get lodged up into our, uh, management queue, where people are reviewing that, like internally and like discussing what went wrong. If there's anything that went wrong, we'll normally report that to the city, um, whether that be the finance director or whoever our main point of contact is for, let's say it was a, an approval process, so we talked, talked to someone in planning, it just depends on what the particular issue is. Um, with compliance, because as I'm sure you guys are aware, whenever we're trying to collect business taxes and back taxes and things of that nature, most businesses are kind of within that complaint category. If there's anything that is in a, like, I would say, like a higher state of, like, of a complaint, where there's someone that is overly aggressive and they're like yelling at our staff or something along those lines, normally, uh, my first thing I do is I usually either reach out to Paulina or I reach out to the finance director, just to ensure that everyone's aware that this is a particular issue that is, that's happening.
Okay, and then I'm on the, I'm on the website right now, the processing center. Uh, are you open to, uh, working with Paulina to add an additional square, I guess it's I guess there's a square box or section in this area that will put that, like in other words, file a complaint?
Sure. So we have... I mean, would it be like a city staff? We can talk...
Yeah, it'll be like a joint email thing, you guys both have access to kind of thing. Yeah? Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, because I know a lot of businesses have voice concerns, but I think if we could create a dialogue between the city and you guys more efficiently, will be beneficial to our community, so.
Agreed. Thank you, council member. Mayor Proten?
I had a quick question. Could be city or you. Are all contractors have... Must have the business license for West Covina?
Yes. They're doing work in what the city of West Covina, they're required to have a business license.
Okay. And this includes like all the instructors or anybody like that, you know, that we partner, like in recreation or anything? So they all go through HDL to get a business license, right?
Right.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I have a... Okay, I think that the possibility is me, or have this modern AI or other city council complaining about service. We just want customer service. Okay? And the meaning, when people come in, want to do business, set up business in West Covina, and they apply the business license, and I think the issue is how can we help them to obtain the business license, because they want to provide the fee to the city. So I think this is important, is the customer service. I think that... I think we heard about the issue is some of the business, new businesses, say they have a hard time to get a business license or something, they cannot get people. That's what we heard. So I think that's the reason we invite you to give us. And I remember 2015, when we have staff in-house, but we decided to go to the outsourcing, meaning a bigger company like you guys to provide better service, and hopefully, and the people can get it done, okay, in no time. I think this is the purpose, okay, how to provide better service, customer service, and how to invite more business to come to our city. Okay? I think this is the issue is maybe, okay, and looking to how can we improve the service? Or we have a new website? Can we have a new website to apply the business license through our website? Can we do that?
We leave their... We go through their website to do the application.
We did actually just remodel our website, so it is kind of a sleeker look.
It looks like West Covina, or it looks like your website?
It's our website. Yeah, so our website... I think on your website, there is a link to our website, but it is like a direct connection.
My suggestion is the business license, West Covina, is in our city, because people are not going to their website. People will go to West Covina and say, hey, if I all want to set up business in West Covina, they check about the website, right? Because people, they don't know we are contracted out to you. So if we can have our website business license, you click the link, go into their website.
Yes, correct. That's how it is right now.
It is like this right now.
Yeah. Roxanne can pull it up, but if you go to our website and there's a page for business license...
That's what I'm asking. So people will go to our website first, and then you just outsource them, because you have much more manpower. And then our city, that's why I remember we only have a two-person to work entire city and...
Under present.
If they have to answer thousands of email or complaint, and two persons cannot do it. So we have... Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize. I would assume that most people who log on to the West Covina website and they get redirected to HDL's website are probably not going to be noticing a big difference, probably going to figure still in the West Covina website.
No, it's fine. It's fine. It's fine. No. Or just like, we want to have people have my easy access, user-friendly, to find how I can apply, how can I do it? Okay, so in that way, they're not in the maze, okay, cannot go to any places. And if you go to 724, okay, and the people can, at nighttime, to check in, research how to do business in West Covina, how to set up business, because that's our lifeline, welcome to business, come to city to include, okay, to create job, create service. So we'll make sure it's an easy access. And another question I have, I got complaint regarding quite a few. People work at home, okay, and they got your request to pay, okay, and the penalty or this and that. So the issue is, they don't know, because they work at home, need to pay, okay, and the business license. And they're willing to pay business license, but since you got hit them with a penalty. So how we work with that? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so just to be transparent, we don't necessarily hit them with a penalty. We're just only following what the municipal code is stating. Historically speaking, and me and Paulina can obviously talk about this offline, but historically speaking, the city has held pretty firm on not waiving any penalties. Again, this is a policy that we've had for the last 10 years, because when we were hired 10 years ago, we were hired out of necessity, not out of, I think, desire. And the city was in pretty dire straits financially, and I think hiring us, because we were a cheaper option, was like really important. And moving into the discovery phase, where we're make... Trying to make these millions of dollars in new tax revenue, was really important, and waiving money was not necessarily something that was like on the table. So these... And because of that, we've now entrenched ourselves in a situation in which that we don't want to be inequitable to the businesses that we haven't waived the penalties for in the past. And so staying firm and staying like consistent with our policy has been, I think, the... Just the method that we've always been using. However, it... There's always, you know, there's always opportunity to waive penalties for specific circumstances. We could create guidelines, like saying, for an example, if you want to apply for a hardship exemption, like you make less than a certain number of gross receipts, like let's say you make $10,000 or less, you can qualify for a penalty exemption, as long as we make these types of policies that can be equitable and shared across the board to your community. As your consultant, we would just want to make sure that that's being done, so that everyone's being treated fairly and no one's getting like a fair... You know, just because they complain, they get the penalty waiver, but someone who just paid out of pocket doesn't get the penalty.
Absolutely. I understand. I think the... We want to treat our resident, our business partner with fairness, okay? I think, okay, if... Okay, again, again, we're not trying to... People intentionally try to get out their, okay, their responsibility to operate business and make money in our city. We want them to pay a fiction of fairness, but at the same time, I see some people senior, they work at home, okay, and then suddenly they get hit with... They don't even know they need to, okay, apply a business license for them to work at home. So I think there's some... Sometimes they have a neediness, but we're not trying to spoil the people, squeaking wheel, get the grease, that kind of situation. We just want to make sure we treat people with fairness. If they're willing to pay, because they understand they need to pay, but before they don't know they work at home as some kind of a consultant, this and that, they need to even get a business license. So in that way, then we need to talk about how we, or you guys, the judgment, or city manager, to see how we deal with the situation. So in that way, we don't put people out of business. That is not our intention. Okay? I just want to end up... Plus, this is one issue, but the issue more about the new business, how we can apply, how can we help them to apply the business license easier? Okay? If they have any issue, they can get a result right away. I think this is the only thing we care. And that's what this presentation invited you to come over here with us, so we can know each other, because we haven't seen you for 10 years. Okay? This after 10 years, we can see each other again. So anyway, and so anyway, any other city council have... Yeah, council member?
Yeah. So I think one thing our city could fix is if you go to the website, Paulina, and you go to permits, there's no tab right there that says business license permit. So can we add that to that section?
Yeah, go. I think he want to answer you.
I think, yeah, I think that starting your own business is, I think, where it happens. If you guys want to add another one, that would...
This one was more for city staff.
Yeah.
It's confusing how to find that one, too.
Just like an added little clarification, business license permit, and just only because we're on the city council, I just want to make sure we're being sticklers. It's not technically a permit, it's technically a tax, so you'd want to make sure you're labeling it as tax, not permit.
Okay. And then, um... Okay, well, then we have to find an easier way for people to find this. Starting a business, you have it hit, it's like all in rubbish.
On business.
Yeah, so start your own business. So it's like in a little... You have to... You have to click through multiple tabs. So what is it? Team, necessary... So what I would like to see is something on the top of the webpage, when you click on that, start your own business, an actual tab that says, "Apply for Business License." Then now we're making it easier, because I'm not gonna... I'm gonna have to look at all these steps to find you.
Make it easier to apply? Because if you want people pay, you want them to easy way to pay. Okay? Right? Okay? And so let's what this, how can we make, okay, and the business coming in want to apply, and they're willing to join with us, and so we need to give them easy access. Right?
Agreed.
You can work with Paulina.
Okay.
And that the wishes of the council.
Yes.
Whatever works best for you and your business community, and how it affects our website.
Yeah.
I think I can conclude with everybody's, okay, and basically we want is easy access, business-friendly, and we want to, okay, and take care of our partners, okay? If they have any issue, we can take care, okay? You guys can answer. And if any people have issue, and we want to find out what issue is that they don't know they need to apply, and they... We hit them with a very steep penalty, maybe we can see about what issue, okay? And we're not here just try to beat people with their money out of their pocket. No. I think we should try people with fairness, okay? And if people don't know, then they shouldn't be penalized. We never tell them, you need to apply. Okay? Anyway, and this is very few, okay, but still create a customer service issue, okay? But I know there's some business, big business, they intentionally, okay, they try to, okay? And yes, who? Okay? So I... So you have a two, okay, and different situation, but we want to make sure everybody be treated with fairness. And any other... Okay? Okay, council member?
Yeah. So I do see you have a tab here, or a section that says, "Report a Problem." So can you put that by itself, so people can find it better, too?
Yeah, easily.
And then in regards to our own website, I think that's more of our city staff fixing that and putting a tab with the... That's integrated into the tab, so when they click on that, it redirects them to their website. So it'll be our responsibility for that. Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor. So I know on your renewal timeline, I greatly appreciate that you send them multiple notices. I know it's primarily online with one-time mailing and actual notice. I had a question. I know you'll send the delinquency notice once, but when penalties accrue at 10% per month, maxing at 100%, after that last or that only delinquency notice, one, is that delinquency notice by mail or online, like mail?
Yes, so actually, most of these notices are actually done via post-mail. The online renewal notice is basically more of just a... So there's a renewal notice that you'll see mailed renewal notice. That one is like the physical copy that it's like, looks like, almost like a real tax return, where there's like information that you have to fill out, it's like actually a return that you have to file for your business tax return. The other notifications that are happening are actually still by post-mail. There's an email that accompanies them, if you have one on file, but they're just online renewal notices, which actually just points you to the website, because we want to encourage people to use the online platform, basically.
Okay, but they receive a hard copy.
They receive a card copy and an email copy.
Okay. Good to know. And then what is the turnaround time when somebody puts in wanting to have a business license? Like, once they put it in, when would I get my license? Does he have that?
Within three days.
So it's... Close. So it's usually... It depends on a multitude of factors, right? So one is that if it's a contractor, for an example, someone coming from outside the city, it's they are... If they show up to the permit desk and they call us, they get it in 15 minutes, because there's no approvals, there's no complicated issues, it's just a flat fee that they pay and they move on. If you're... Let's just move it up the complication ladder a little bit. You're a retail business of some sort, and you're just in a commercial location. There's commercial planning and commercial zoning that has to get approved. That goes through an approval process. So our side of the equation usually takes 24 hours. We have app... Like people just processing applications nonstop. So that process is actually really quick, as far as from our concern. The planning department can sometimes take a few days to a couple of weeks, depending on the comp... I'm assuming the complexity of that particular commercial zoning application. And then moving it up the ladder even further, if a new massage business comes into town or just a new overly regulated type of business comes into town, that can take months, depending on the situation. But as far as the business license process is concerned, so not necessarily any of the approval processes, that is less than... Less than two days in processing time from HDL.
And then you said in-person, so they can come here to City Hall?
So they... There is no in-person City Hall like desk, but it's usually the contractors that are coming in, because they're trying to pull a permit, and then they can call us. Also, you can do all your applications over the phone, too. You won't... You might not get the business license right away, because you have to go through those approval processes before obtaining one. But generally speaking, we have the online website, we have paper applications you can file, and you can call in.
Really, really quick, I just want to add on what Mayor Proten say, just for example. Okay, we have a new restaurant coming in.
Yeah.
Texas Roarhouse. How long will it take them to get a permit, get a business license?
So depending on the situation, right, and depending on, again, I don't know that location or the... And again, I'm not in the planning department, so it will also depend on their volume of applications they've received. But it would be normally about a day for us to process it, under 24 hours. Then it would go to the planning department, and it would take them around somewhere between three business days and about two weeks. And then in that timeframe, the business then pays, depends on how long, obviously, the business takes to pay, and then we issue a certificate immediately.
So a week, roughly, a week or two?
Yeah, at most, a few weeks. And so, and that's usually depending on the business's responsiveness, too, because another...
I know, the documentation.
Yeah. As far as our processing time is concerned, we're always under two days. As far as the other departments and the business being involved in the situation, because they haven't submitted plans or they haven't submitted information, that can take a few weeks, depending on the situation.
Good to know. Okay? Yeah. Any others question? Yep. Council member?
Yes. And then, so those who, like Mayor Wu referenced to, who have small businesses or who may have not known about the process, are they getting like a notice to register themselves by an X amount of day before they're... Before they face a penalty or...
So no, immediately in the city of West Covina's municipal code, the first day that you're operating a business, you're supposed to... You're supposed to obtain a business license. 30 days from that day to get applied and pay before penalties start to accrue, that's when the 10% penalty starts to accrue with a maximum of 100%. I would say at this point, like at this point in the program, like we're as far as long as we are, there is not a multitude of businesses that are out of compliance anymore. We've spent this last 10 years doing that kind of cleanup phase that I was been talking about, and I...[1556.46] And I, I find it unlikely that it's more than a handful of businesses that are experiencing this penalty at this point. The reason I brought up the equity concern before is because each year, this happens, right? So each year, there's a business that, right now, in, in March, sorry, we just moved into March, there's businesses right now paying 20% penalties because they forgot. Like, they were an active business, but they just, you know, things get busy, and then you, they just don't remember because they didn't pay within that 30-day timeframe, and they're paying a 20% penalty. If we decide to, for these businesses that are completely unlicensed, who have not been paying you tax for five, six, seven, eight, nine years to waive their penalties, the only thing that I'm basically providing here is that from an equity perspective, it can't just be that I, you know, I, for any, Tony, you mentioned that there is a, um, I, I didn't know qualifier, right? Well, every business that's in this discovery program is going to claim that whether they, whether that's true or not. I had, um, particular businesses that are mega million-dollar businesses, billion-dollar businesses, are like, West Covina isn't Covina? And so we have that all the time where there isn't this like, it's, if we make that the rule, then we have to apply that to everyone because everyone's going to say, oh, I forgot that the, the business license renewal was in December, and I just missed the deadline. We have these like different things. So if we want to create like an equitable rule where there's like some sort of substrate of businesses that qualify for this, like you mentioned home-based businesses, that would be totally fine to do some sort of like, again, hardship exemption that you would want to do for the penalties. I would recommend just, we would, again, work with Paulina, trying to work through those and identify what those particular exemptions might be for the penalties. But we'd want to make sure we protect the equity perspective so that people also don't abuse the, the graciousness or the olive branch you're trying to hand out for the penalty programs.
Very good, okay, any other, yeah, Mayor Poten?
Just three questions, but all similar. How much is a business license? What is a penalty fee? And what does that 100% maximum penalty fee look like?
So it depends on the business. So your business tax code is pretty outdated. So most of your businesses, right, as far as it, like, just on, on the general frame, you're having like professionals, you're retail businesses, so on and so forth. It's around $100 to start, and then it's about, I think it's about $10 per employee thereafter. So it's an, like, per employee tax, so it just depends, it's a scaling perspective on how many employees you have. Then you have your residential rentals, which is around the same type of rate. It's about $89 for the first unit, and then for every unit thereafter, it's about $10. So if you have like your 10-unit apartment complex, you're paying about 100 bucks plus 89 bucks. The more you move on and the more, like, the business types change, so contractors pay a flat fee. Then you move into your commercial rentals, which is what I mentioned before. This is where a prime, like, the, the most amount of your revenue comes from. It's because it's a 1% gross receipts tax. So it's $10 per $1,000 of gross receipts. So if you make a million dollars, you're paying $10,000. And so there's a, like, this huge discrepancy, obviously, between the business, on how the businesses are paying in the city. Normally, codes are set up this way for cities that are similar to this is because commercial landlords pass on their taxes to their tenants. And so cities will sometimes set up codes like this to make it so that the money is basically not really directly being paid by general businesses, but it just generally gets paid by everyone in some way, shape, or form. We would recommend, obviously, at some point, the city recommend, like, you know, consider doing a business tax reconstruction and a modernization. But that's something that it would just depend on how you guys would want to go about that, and it would require a vote if you were to change some of these things around.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, okay. Can we, just, we see on fire, you guys have a question? Can you do us a favor? Can you leave a contact information so in case? I don't think we will call you all the time, but maybe in the blue moon, we will say, hey, your, your first name is?
Ian.
Ian, okay, I say, and then Christina?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so you provide the information so in case we have an issue, we can, okay, since you are kind, and our outsourcing contractor, we need have some issue, maybe we can contact you directly. Thank you so much, appreciate it, okay, for coming to explain everything for us. Appreciate. See, 10 years is a long time. Okay, and the city council, uh, do we need to vote on the VCM file? No, right? No, okay, let's move on the city council report. AB 1234 conference and the meeting report. Anybody have left? If none, then go to city council request or city council comment. No? Oh, I'm surprised.
No, I do have.
You do have.
Ah, damn. Go ahead, council member.
Uh, see, I wanted to make a council request to create rules, policies, and procedures for our, our, uh, big events we have, like for our spring festival. I want to make sure that we have, uh, rules in place for our vendors, for our alcohol sellers, and making sure there's a fair process and a selection and all that stuff that goes in creating a, the rules and, and procedures for a major event like that.
Okay, anybody against this? Nope, okay, approved, okay? So city to create any of fairness for the vendors and alcohol selling and this and that, for everybody have all fair chance. Uh, you have something?
I was just gonna remind everybody that on the next council meeting, I won't be here as I have to attend a, I'll be at Sacramento for work.
What? So we have the council next meeting?
You want, that's up to you guys, but I won't be here on March 18th.
We will miss you, okay? And the council member, you have, you have more?
Yeah, just to finish that, the last sentence on that, that will be to bring it back by the second meeting of May. Is that realistic?
We okay, it's okay for that, okay? The spring festival, spring, okay, spring festival already over if you go in the May. Okay, spring festival is the end of this month.
I know, but I think next year.
Information.
There's a lot of writing that has to go into there.
Make sure we have a fairness for every, all the participant. Okay, and, uh, what else?
Uh, the next one will be, if you could provide us a, um, I did, oh, I guess there could be, come on, vice versa, but, uh, I, I did a council request regarding veteran, of creating a veterans advisory committee that was approved by the council. If you could give us an update at the next meeting, where that's at and, and process into that? Also, if you could provide us, uh, was there an update for the fire hydrants testing? Was that the next meeting or the meeting after that?
You can provide it at the next.
By the first meeting of April, so let these here, too.
I could always watch the council meeting online, too.
We'll call her so she can give her comments.
You can do Zoom with us. We need your participant with voting.
Yes, and then, and then also will be to, uh, have TransTech, uh, I think it's to join with Mayor Wu's request earlier, but it's to have TransTech present on the high-receptile improvement grant that we just received for cycle 12, and how they, they plan on using that money and the equipment that they'll be purchasing, and who's responsible, and so forth in that process. So I think that was going to be at the next meeting, right? Or, yeah.
Okay, if we can, so, uh, we want to see the oversight regarding the purchase and the process and, uh, the, the signage and the design, and we should have some kind of, uh, example and picture to showing how they install those sign on our, on our street, residential street, so we can take a look how it goes, so we can improve before it finish. So in, and create issue for our resident. Okay, anything else?
And, and then just to add to that, I want also TransTech to present to us some alternative idea and designs that they have at their disposal. You know, I've, I've discovered there's so much more out there to ensure safety in our roads, so I want to make sure, uh, Melissa is also able to present on the newer technology. I think most recently, uh, I sent over to TransTech for Orange Avenue, that, uh, the big stop signs with the LEDs around.
The flashing stop sign.
And the stop itself also illuminate, so that's some of the newer technology that's out there, and I think it'll be instrumental to ensuring our streets are safe.
And I want to add on, just say, I think I agree with you because on the Cortez, the stop sign, the flashing stop sign, it always only work for certain time, but most of the time it's not working, okay? And I've been calling for so many time, and either battery or either something, okay? And I think this is a new stop sign, uh, for flashing stop sign, so we need something more reliable. Yeah, okay, next, next one, please?
No more.
Are you sure? Okay, and all the city council have any requests and any comment?
I have a comment.
You want to comment, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, just, so just to, uh, I think someone spoke about Edison light poles and, and the being dark in the alley, so I, and, and the council are working really diligently with SoCal, Southern California Edison, and, uh, we have requested a meeting, uh, with Southern California Edison with their designated person responsible for our lighting infrastructure throughout the city of West Covina, and we're going to make sure to communicate with SoCal Edison the need to improve our lighting in various streets throughout our community and throughout our streets. So just to update that, and that's about it.
Uh, and I think that we talk about the alley behind the.
Yes, alley, yeah, that was one of the, that was the main.
I think Edison should add a street light over there to make sure all the issues not going to be continue over there because light, it show people won't be hiding over there, do drugs, sell drug, or do weird stuff.
Yes.
So, so, so.
Brighter beams.
Yeah, I think so, Edison should step up, okay, to put the right place, to check all the dark areas to make sure, and I think we talk about, okay, the patio of the shadow area with all the walk areas with LED light because it's pretty dark and this and that. So, and I think we need a report to see what is the status. I think I've been request about, okay, between the houses, they have a common area, and the, the, the residents pay for like HOA on their taxes, okay? And it's called the LMD number, I don't know, number four or something, okay? And that should be including to train, uh, train down all this vegetation so people can walk, walk around and not worry about, some people will jump out. And then all those light on the, around the walkway, and they should put on the LED light with a white light so people can walk through during the nighttime, it is not going to be scared or worried and if people walk with the dog. So I think I've required this for a couple of years already, so hopefully, this thing can be done because it's a safety issue. Okay, any other thing?
Yeah, and then, uh, the last thing I'll say will be, um, I did join, uh,